Good.
Good.
You good, everybody? Okay. Like to call the village board of Weston trustees to order. I always struggle with that first line. At six nineteen, could all stand for pledge of reasons to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One nation. Thank you, everybody.
Uh, roll call.
Kaloni.
Here.
Ermeling.
Here.
Feeny.
Here.
My now is absent and excused. Zhang.
Here.
White.
Here.
Sagami.
Here.
Thank you. Um, public comments. At this time, anybody would like to speak about anything for five minutes? If you're more than welcome to from the audience or on social media, anybody? I'm sorry, I don't mean to talk to you while you're eating, Michael. But anybody on there? No? Okay. All right. Lauren brought some treats, so if you're enjoying those, those look fabulous. Anybody else in the public that wants to make a comment? Third time, anybody want to make a public comment? Hearing none, moving on to public hearings number four. Letter from village attorney regarding hearings. Or who wants to?
I think you could just move ahead and open the hearing if you're okay with that.
Okay.
I just pretty much attached that document just for reference for them.
Oh, okay. Yep. Everybody seen it? Number five, open hearing and hear comments. Operator license appeal Spencer Schumacher. Hearing is open. Um, we want Spencer to talk first.
Yeah, Spencer here?
Yes, yes.
All right.
Would you like to address? Yeah. Just state your name and address for the record.
Spencer Schumacher, two one one four Weston Avenue.
Okay. I guess the thought here is why it should be, why you don't believe it should be declined.
Um, well, when, I think it's for, like, when I stole a deer stand, like, when I was a kid. Um, it was a really long time ago. I learned a lesson. And I even talked to the guy and like got to like sit down with him and talked and like learned like both sides, you know, like I talked to him. And we both came to an understanding of like, you know, like I messed up and like it was a good opportunity for him to teach his kids like, if you steal something, it doesn't turn out good.
Okay.
So I think there might be some confusion. Did you get the letter that outlined what the convictions were?
Uh, no, not at all.
Okay. All right, so.
Yes, yes, we asked you, Dan. We called you. We called you on Friday and we emailed the letter.
Yeah, I didn't get a chance to look at it.
Okay.
Okay, well, here, let me read for you what the convictions are, okay? Uh, in two thousand seventeen, possession of THC in a separate incident convicted of resisting or obstructing an officer. That was in two thousand seventeen. That was in municipal court, probably Weston Municipal Court, okay? The second one was two thousand eighteen and it was possession of THC, possession of drug paraphernalia and possession of tobacco. That would have been again in Weston Municipal Court in two thousand eighteen. And in two thousand nineteen, it was possession of THC and possession of drug paraphernalia. That also would have been in Weston Municipal Court. So those are the three convictions that were relied upon when they denied your application. So it wasn't anything stealing. So, so what I, what I need you to do is to present evidence of either an honorable discharge from the military with no subsequent conviction. So were you in the military?
No.
Okay. Or, or that you completed punishment of each of these items you were convicted for with evidence showing compliance of all terms and conditions of any kind of penalty, probation, supervision, and at least one year has elapsed without a subsequent conviction. Can you address that with the board?
Um, yes, uh, I haven't gotten in trouble for a really long time and, um, yeah.
So whatever fines you receive from these prior convictions, you paid, is that?
Yeah, I paid that and I also took like classes and stuff like, uh, I remember I sat down with like the Rothschild judge and he made me take a couple of courses and stuff.
And what, what are you applying for? What liquor license or what?
Um, yeah.
Bartender license at where?
Just at Shell gas station.
Okay. Um, and, and your evidence tonight when you stood up there at first was about a deer stand and then nothing else. And then Friday you had an email, right? And as of today, you haven't bothered to look at it?
No.
Okay. I'm good, Lauren? But it, just in his testimony right now, he was in Rothschild. Does he have convictions in other jurisdictions?
One of the ones was in Rothschild.
One of these listed?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That, that would be all listed, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, Yi?
So the question for you, um, is your last conviction was in twenty nineteen. What have you done since then that makes you, you know, what, what steps have you done to improve since twenty nineteen?
Well, I got my life on track. I got a job. I got a dog. I started to go to the gym. Started to put my health on track, but.
Can I ask a follow-up? Sure, absolutely. Um, did you, are, are you still involved with individuals that you were with in twenty nineteen at all?
Um, I'm actually not. I actually dropped like the friend that I got in trouble with, like, like with the deer stand. Um, I also stopped talking to like a lot of my old friends. I made a lot of new connect, um, made a lot of new friends at the gym that actually helped me like better my life and like get healthier.
Can I ask that another question?
Absolutely.
Um, the deer stand doesn't have anything to do with the twenty nineteen possession of THC and THC and possession of drug, uh, drug. So, um, I, I guess the question I'm asking again is, um, are you not, are you no longer involved with, with anybody that you were involved with, affiliated with in twenty nineteen that is, that's directly related to your case back in twenty nineteen with the possession of THC?
I do not hang out with the friends that I did from high school. I've grown up.
Okay. Can I ask another question? How old are you, Mr. How old are you?
Um, I'm nineteen.
Okay. Um, twice, twice, um, we stated that you had this email on Friday and you hadn't looked at it and then I asked you again. Did you not think it was important to read that?
Um, I work, so.
I mean, how often do you work? How many hours a week?
Thirty-five, forty.
Okay. You didn't, had no time to read that email and you didn't think it'd be relevant for tonight?
Didn't really have time.
Yep, Hushain?
Where do you go to gym?
Uh, I go to the YMCA.
Which one? In the west one?
Uh, the brand new west one.
How often you go there?
Uh, I've been going, uh, well, last week I really couldn't go that much because of the weather, but I just started to go about a month ago. Been going about every single day. I got weight protein powder, but trying to get some gains.
Okay.
Mark?
Yes?
I think you might have somebody here too.
Oh, okay.
That may want to talk, but I'm not.
Is there somebody else that's with you that like to, okay? Just state your name and address for record, please.
Kim Anderson, uh, fifteen hundred, um, Mozzany, Wisconsin.
Okay.
I just want to say Spencer, excuse me, is an amazing employee. He's there on time. He does, keeps busy. He's one of my best employees. Um, uh, he just is there for you and he helps out. Customers love him. He's very presentable. He's very, you know, he wants, you know, he always tells them to have a good night, have a good day. Um, he, every, the other employees like him very much. He, um, I know he's made mistakes in the past, but I can tell he has grown up. He, you know, he is quiet. He is, you know, a little bit, you know, there, but he really does his job well. He is a good young man. He's polite, you know? Sometimes nowadays you don't see that in younger kids.
What shift does he?
You know, he works like closing shifts.
Which is important.
Um, usually from, um, four until ten. Some days it's two to ten. Um, there's other days where he cannot work, but sometimes he can help out. You know, he, he tried, he's willing to help out. He's willing to, um, be there if I need somebody. Um, you know, I, I've, I've been in my business for a very long time and I hope to know I have a good judgment of character. And Spencer is a very nice, a very nice young man.
Is the shell station ever attended by one employee?
Uh, sometimes, yes.
Closing time?
Uh, yes.
Okay. So he's not able to close right now?
No, no.
Okay. So he'd always have two, so if this license is granted, he'd be there alone?
Yes.
From when to when?
Um, from, he usually is, works from four to ten.
But alone, from when to when?
Yeah.
From?
Well, five until ten.
Okay.
For five hours. Yeah. And we do have security systems. I mean, we, um, Arby's is with us. There's always people at Arby's, um, you know. Just to let you know what's, what Spencer will do for his job. He will try, he will chase a car, someone who's going to drive off for gas. He will chase them and photograph their license plates, you know? I mean, that's dedication.
Yeah. Anybody else? Lauren, Barb, Yi, Hushain? Nate? Uh, nothing, nothing, okay. Myself either. Um, okay. I think that's it. Anything else to add?
Um, you know, and with the email, I'm sorry, I don't always look at my emails either. I'm just not, I look at a computer all day. Not that that's an excuse. This was important. This is very important to all of us. Um, but I understand sometimes.
It was, uh, you had a conversation with Spencer?
So he got a letter in October. He came in, talked to me.
Yep.
I explained the appeal process to him. That's when he gave me the, the deer stand letter, which I.
Okay.
Then there was some more information on, I think it was Thursday, Thursday or Friday last week. And I knew I couldn't get him mailed the, the new information about tonight. So I called him and I emailed him that letter and I said, this is going to explain a little bit more what's going to happen tonight.
So when you talked to him, called him, you actually talked to him?
I, I talked to Spencer, yes.
Okay, and said the email was coming?
The email's coming. I verified his email and I sent it over within minutes.
Great, all right, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and I should say that, you know, the legislature has kind of tied everybody's hands when it comes to these things. And so the issue for you is whether or not he completed his punishment, uh, all the terms and conditions of probation, extended supervision, parole, and at least one year has elapsed since release without a subsequent conviction. So, uh, we don't have anything showing any subsequent conviction that I've seen. And so, um, if his testimony is true that he completed punishment and paid whatever fines he had, um, then the statute would require that he be given the license.
So you're, you're, you're saying that according to the statute, we really only have one way to go?
Correct.
Okay.
Because this is a non-exempt offense and he, uh, has shown that he hasn't had any convictions over the past year. And, uh, and I guess the only thing that's not clear is whether he, uh, completed all of the punishment from the prior convictions, but we haven't seen anything that says he.
That's come up, okay.
Yes, yeah, okay. Completed that, so.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, let's see. I'm going to close the hearing. Um, action, discussion and action on license for Spencer Schumacher. Any discussion?
Can we grant a, a six month? Or would it even be?
Well.
We're pretty close to the six month already.
Yeah.
Right now, so.
But just as I was saying that, I'm going.
Yes.
Even, uh, so let, let's say something did happen. Um, then it would be, you know, registered. It would be, it would be a citation. So either way, we would be notified and since it is close to six months, I, I'm going to tell you, um, I don't feel good about this. I don't feel that Spencer is taking this seriously at all. Um, I, I, I do feel good with, um, the, the manager, um, that what, some of the things that she said. But this is a tough one for me. I, I don't think we have anywhere to go but approve. But this is one that I, um, I just, Spencer, I just believe you, you need to step it up a little bit and take things a little bit more seriously and, and maybe, uh, act a little more concerned.
Um, I would like to say that, um, I do not plan on staying at this gas station very much longer. Maybe a month or two at max. Um, I have put in applications. I did actually go to the Job Center. My friend's mom actually works there. So I will be getting a different job at most likely a factory that does pay a lot better and I probably won't need this liquor license for long. So I do really thank you guys for giving it, giving it to me so I can at least have a job for a little bit longer, but.
Can I ask a question to Attorney Yi, please? So, um, Attorney Yi, I guess if we, if we as a board here, in a sense here, according to what you just said there, that we, it had, there's no exemption in the sense in this case here, then why are we doing this, why, why are we, why are we even, um, in doing this process? You know, I guess I'm just kind of curious as to that.
I think we'll get to that.
Yeah.
Because we have both the guidebook and the ordinance on the agenda tonight.
Okay. Because I, I'm going to be very honest, I'm going to vote no. I'm just, just even despite the fact that says that I don't feel comfortable with it either as well too. And that's just my vote.
Lauren?
Uh, question for counsel. Grant the license based contingent upon him proving that he's paid all is, is that appropriate or not?
Uh, well, I think that would be appropriate.
So we could, we could deny tonight looking for, uh, proof that it's been taken care of.
Or prove with the contingent that if he had, he can't prove it, it's, it's null and void. The approval is null and void.
So the license would be, uh, held. It would be granted but held until proof was that all, all the things that.
Contingent upon, uh, proof of completed punishment with evidence showing compliance of all terms and conditions.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that. Looking for, looking for motion?
But I, I would be all right with that as well too. I was set on no, but I, I guess that would be, I would be more comfortable with that, right?
Because I'm not real comfortable with this.
Looking for motion?
I move to, uh, I move to grant a liquor license to Spencer and I don't see his last name.
Schumacher.
Schumacher, thank you. Uh, provided or based on the, or based on him proving that he has paid all fines, forfeitures and completed any and all punishments, uh, to the satisfaction of the village by four P M. on Monday, January third.
So moved, uh, second?
I'll second.
Second by Lauren. Any more on the discussion?
Well, just how, where, how is he, how, what type of proof are you looking, oh, what is he going to show you?
Uh, it, it would have to be registered. I mean, it'd be by the municipality. So if something happened in Rothschild, something happened here, maybe on C cap, yeah.
Well, I guess I'm kind of asking and actually for him is what proof you, are you looking for?
Just, just that.
A receipt saying he paid it?
Satisfaction that it got taken care of, yeah.
So, uh, some, some receipts, some phone call from the Marathon County or the Marathon Clerk of Court saying, yeah, everything is taken care of. Just something that we can hang our hat on.
This might be a little more difficult than normal because all of these are municipal offenses.
Yeah.
None of these are filed on C cap.
Right, that's on C cap.
Okay.
Can I, can I ask a, um, just another clarification to this portion here? Are we, is it going to be at the discretion of our staff here to determine if it's sufficient enough to meet, um, you know, our request? Or is it going to have to come back to this board here to decide?
I, I believe staff should handle that.
Yeah, I just.
It shouldn't have to wait a whole month for us. Staff could handle it.
Once we're clear on that, I just wanted to be.
The sooner, the sooner information comes back, the sooner the license is granted. Okay?
And even for municipal offenses, I'm, I'm sure that just a, uh, a call to a municipal clerk will be.
I guess my question.
Yep.
Chief, is you said one was Rothschild and the rest in Weston?
Yeah.
Okay, I mean that there.
You talked to the court clerk here in.
Every, it's okay.
Okay. So, anymore? No. Uh, all who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry.
Oh, may I have the floor first?
Sure.
Uh, Spencer? What we've done is we've given you two weeks to reach out to the chief of police for, uh, for the village of Weston and for the village of Rothschild. Uh, we would like them to either write a letter, phone or provide some other documentation that you've completed all, uh, all penalties, uh, including paying all fines, uh, or anything else. Got it?
Yep, super. Uh, just the staff. All right, eight. I'd like to open the hearing and hear comments for operator license appeal, Christopher Harris. Christopher? Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Christopher Harris, um, now is at ten twelve East Street Marathon City. Um, just moved a couple of weeks ago. So, um, almost like his case, um, I, my case was in two thousand fifteen. I ran another case, kept myself clean, um, the same way people, you know, raising my girls, so. Um, only enough said is that I work with, um, good people at, uh, the store. Um, all my customers like, um, I got to know a lot of them and I even get some wanting to even come in there and don't even have to buy none. He says, I just had to come and talk to you, buddy. You know, and I'm not even friends with the guy, you know, he's just, but he's just reaching out to the community, letting them know that, you know, I'm here, I'm listening, you know, and trying to serve them right, you know? Um, I don't think nobody ever seen me in a bad attitude ever. Um, if I see one of my customers, you know, bad mood or everything, I try to lift them up. Um, even my employees. So, besides that, um, I've been doing great, so.
First location?
Uh, the store in number six, uh, Weston here.
Weston by the hospital?
No.
Okay, because there's one out there by County County two. Okay. Um, questions?
Yi? Mr. Harris, um, just a question for you here. Your, your last conviction was April thirteenth, twenty sixteen, correct?
Yeah, uh, what, what was that? That was just, uh.
The, um, knowingly possession of meth, uh, what?
Party to crime, yes.
Okay, so have you, are you still involved or affiliated with any of those individuals at all?
Not at all.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Harris, back in nineteen ninety-seven, um, there was a, uh, there was a disposition of guilty recorded for aggravated assault or I'm sorry aggravated battery intent for great bottle of harm.
Yes.
Commas I agree with on that. Uh, that's, yeah, that's been.
It's been over.
Over twenty years.
Something, yes.
Yep. So in, in that time, what have you done to turn your life around and?
Um, like main thing is not to hang around your old group, not to be involved in same history or, you know, of the story where it began. You have to move a lot of the pages, make new pages. So what I've learned, I have brothers that's, we was from Milwaukee, so we was raised from not the streets, not like that, it's just a rough neighborhood, but, like, you know, my mother and father was good parents and uh, my father worked at American Motors for thirty-three years, only missed one day. Uh, my mother, she was a lawyer and a realtor and, yes, just we moved up to Wisconsin Rapids and graduated assumption high school and it's just hanging around the wrong group, even though that I'm from the, the rough parts of city. I never got in trouble until I got up to a group. You know, it's a little different from my culture, but, um, I have to learn where people entice you to do something up here and this and that. I just don't follow them all. So I got three beautiful girls to worry about and, um, if nobody don't want to work, I'm going to step up and work because I got, I got bills, I got things to take care of, so. Um, I got more responsibility than I ever had, um, a good fiance that's a teacher. So from Marathon County, uh, from Marathon City, so, and she kept me straight, so.
President, just another, Yi question. Uh, Mr. Harris, if we were to hypothetically, if we were to deny that, so you didn't get this, what would it mean to you?
Less hours. Um, it'd be stressful upon the work, um, force that where we work at, uh, because we are down, we're, it's everywhere. We don't have no employees. Um, like I said, we, I don't know, just I wouldn't. I'd be a little devastated. Come over here to see my employees. I'm at my customers a lot.
So, so you're primarily, you're manager?
Yep.
Um, like a shift manager or what?
No, manager, manager.
Assistant manager.
Assistant manager.
Okay, sis, you're the manager?
I'm manager.
Okay. So while you're there, um, you're, you always have someone there with a license?
Yep.
Okay.
And have put a toll on her because, and then my other employees, two others that's, you know, have a license, so.
Yeah. How long you been at that location?
Two, three months, three months.
Yeah. So you don't close, you're not there alone. Are there any shifts there alone?
There is a few at closing.
Okay.
Maybe an hour or two in the morning, but I work the mornings and Dylan works the closings.
So you, and you close what time of night?
Eleven now.
Eleven?
It's midnight, but we close at eleven.
So and you can sell till nine or can you sell till eleven now? You can sell beer till?
Beer, beer.
Or midnight?
Midnight, definitely.
Liquor and wine has to stop at nine.
Nine o'clock.
And in the morning you open up when?
We open at five.
So I think you can start selling at six, yeah, okay. I'm sorry, Hushain?
Uh, where did you work before this job?
Um, wine brender shoe company in Merrill. They didn't, they didn't grow it. I liked this job because that was more hard work to do for old man, but, um, it paid pretty good, but getting here because, you know, to get up out of there and plus we knew we was moving, so a little bit closer to, you know, somewhere close to any job that was closer to Marathon City, so.
And how long you worked on that job?
Um, a year and a half, almost two years, two years, over two years, wine brender. I was, um, one of the highest paid, um, machine operators there, so.
Uh, Yi? Um, I guess just going off what Attorney Yi was saying, you know, hit on the, the outline, the criteria as like he outlined before here. Um, I'm assuming that for your conviction, um, for the twenty sixteen incident and the nineteen ninety-seven, you obviously served your sentence and compensated. You paid all the fines and dues that's.
All through DOC, uh, Department of Corrections, um, I spent, um, eight years, ten years straight and then uh, two years for child support and for the party to crime, having somebody in my house that was doing drugs, yes.
Um, now, just a follow-up, Mr. President, I care, is there any, and not saying that I don't trust you on this, but do you have any, do you, were you able to present any proof to the staff at all?
Actually, the department, any department could try to prove, proof of, um, just closure of my, all my fines, yes. And, um, not only that, but I did, I got in trouble with a speeding ticket two months ago and that was it. So, but besides that, the Department of Corrections will have my, and it won't be on C cap no more because it's closed.
But, but to have it go away, you'd have to be expunged.
Yes, they have.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but that's, that, that takes them a couple of years rather than that.
Yeah. Not with this guy. He's, there's, uh, quite a bit every month. I mean, he's got hundreds every month, yeah.
Oh.
Mr. Chairman, I think we also need to point out in the letter from counsel that, um, in fact, his last sentence says, Mr. Harris needs to obtain a pardon for the nineteen ninety-seven convictions in order to qualify for an operator's license. That, for me, that pretty much says it all.
It's the pardon or.
Yeah, so what, so what the, you know, so again, the legislature has really tied the board's hands. Uh, in the last case, we talked about, you know, if it's, uh, not an exempt offense and they can show that they've served their sentence, then you have to grant it if there hasn't been a conviction in the prior year. Now with an exempt defense, you can't get a license unless the governor, the governor pardons you or you get a pardon. And it's not the more recent conviction that is the one that would stop you from getting a license. It's the ones from way back in ninety-six, six and ninety-seven. And so the legislature has, has determined that those specific, uh, violations, um, are exempt offenses and that means that the analysis is over. Uh, so you have to get a, a pardon, uh, from those offenses in order to get this kind of license. Or the legislature needs to change their law.
Right.
And give the board more discretion in deciding what to do. And give the board more discretion in deciding what to do.
You know, our, our hands are kinda tied, but I, I'm not, uh, I, I get notifications constantly and um, I, I don't know the course on how to do it, but uh, uh, I, I see fifty to a hundred every month.
I tried it years ago for pardons.
Yeah, well, I know, but if, if your manager helps and possibly the owner of store, uh, Prince Cheryl, he helps. You'd be, you might be surprised, you know, and if you did it years ago in prior administrations, you, you might have a much better chance uh with Governor Erk, so, just saying.
So what's he actually gotta do?
You, you need to look for a pardon or um, and, and that's how I see the, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Attorney Edie. And, and you calling it, I mean, same thing as in a
Expungement.
Expungement, right, yeah.
Yeah.
What I, what I see is, is it's called a pardon and then they actually list the name, what they're doing, what they did, what they're doing now. Uh, you know, it actually says a little quip about their families and, and how they're contributing to society. And uh, I, I read them all the time and I've never seen them before, not like this, so. Yeah, I don't know how long ago you tried.
Uh, probably about ten years ago.
Yeah, see that is a wrong administrative, I mean, not the wrong, but uh, not the current one, so.
Probably a bit more than that.
Yep, so I know it's a hardship at the store, uh, you know, with managing, but uh, you know, a manager, as long as he's got a bartender's license there, you know, working with him, you know, he can work quite a few hours and I, I know it's a hardship, it's a hardship, like you said, everywhere.
Everywhere.
But it, it won't restrict you from doing your job, you know, so. Okay, so uh, we're gonna go through a vote here.
To close the hearing.
Correct, uh, any more to add?
No, I don't, thank you and
Yep.
I gave you more information than what to do.
Thank you.
Yeah, yep, all right. All right, um, hearing, uh, any discussion, uh, on the close of hearing, then we can go there, so I'm gonna close, close the hearing. Um, action on license for Christopher Harris, any more discussion?
Well, I, we don't really have a choice.
Yep, I, I don't believe there is either. So, um, a motion, a motion would be in order?
Motion to deny until such time as you can grant a pardon.
All right, motion by Ermeling?
Second.
Second by Feeny, any more on the discussion? All those in favor of the denial, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so Kerry. All right. Thank you both. Uh, minutes from previous meetings, eleven fifteen twenty twenty one, Board of Trustees meeting and uh, twelve thirteen twenty twenty one, Joint Board of Trustees and Commission meeting.
Move to approve eleven and twelve.
Motion by ye who approve, second by Ushane, anything on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so Kerry. Reports, minutes from boards, committees, and commissions.
Move to acknowledge items seventeen, twenty-one, and twenty-two concurrently.
Second.
Uh, motion by Feeny, second by White, any more on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so Kerry. Reports from departments. Uh, twenty-sixth administrator?
Um, I'll give you a little recap on what the status of the uh municipal facility project is, we've gotten a few comments that the last Monday's um, joint meeting of board of the uh, in the plant commission, so I, I guess a lot of times popular myths into uh, the interaction with budget design, budget, it's on schedule, um, as we uh, proceed with what we've updated and where we may be, and if there's any major change or that comes up, it will certainly be brought to this uh, this board for any consideration.
The footprint is definitely identified now by the structure and I believe almost all the metal is connecting all the panels, right?
Yeah, the um.
All the trusses.
Those sort of trusses should already be attached and I think the schedule is that those uh, last precast panels will be set this week or the week between Christmas and New Year's.
Are those on the north side?
Yes.
Okay.
So that would be the uh, last wall of the building essentially to go up.
And why? Because they have to bring the trusses in, right?
Right, they have the camera room so that you can move their equipment and uh, without the trusses and so forth, yes.
Okay, any more questions, Bart?
I just, I guess, um, I was gonna email you after that planning committee meeting because I was concerned with one of the comments that one of the people in the audience made was that we were over budget already and I going, gosh, I didn't.
There, there was a lot of things said um, with uh, an extra amount of passion on a lot of things and.
Yeah, but I just wanted to verify that I was, I wasn't missing something, cause I thought, well, gosh, I would think
Yeah.
that would have been something we would have been being aware of, so, but I just wanted to verify that, so.
Right.
Thank you.
Um, I guess you, I noted that our holiday party will be on the fourteenth of uh, January, so just that's why I just wouldn't be glad to have that here and have it passed. Um, I don't know, I guess, was there anything else special on there, we, I know we have some other follow-up yet to do on the Public Safety Building, including that, um, trustees, agami was um, with the support of that, we, we look a little further because there was clearly a difference between how the configured part of the buildings was treated versus the, the stuff that remained, pretty much intact. Primary and specifically like the offices for Everest Metro, there really wasn't what, anything done within that space as part of these projects, so the uh the direction was to get updated estimates for more coverings and doors and so forth with Everest Metro and any parts of the safer space that were not uh, impacted on that. I don't know that that's a substantial difference from what we've seen, but we'll be getting an updated estimate from the architect on that.
Okay. Okay, thank you, um, clerk, twenty-seven?
I guess I, I did state it in my report, but just another reminder that nomination papers are due um, January fourth, I, yeah. And we've had two other people inquire and pick up papers and um, I noted that Lauren filed his non-candidacy, so.
Okay.
And that had to be posted on our website, a new law.
Under. Could have he waited right to the very end?
He had to have it to me by December twenty-fourth.
Okay, okay.
I felt it was necessary to get it in as soon as possible, so anyone that aren't around, have this much.
I respect that, thank you, Lauren, thank you.
Out of more curiosity, who are the two?
Well, we don't, I mean, do we have to know?
We actually have part, parts of their paperwork, so yes, we can say the names right now.
Good.
It was a Jasper Har- Hardingger or Harting?
He was at the last joint PC meeting.
Yes, he was.
Remember the name.
I can't, I can't remember exactly how you say his last name, it was H something, Har- Hardingger or Harding?
He's a, a twelve-year veteran and he's also running for county board uh, number twenty-two.
Yes.
Which I am also.
Yes, that is the same guy. And then, um, the other person was Jamie Wyland.
Jamie Wyland? No, I, no, I, I don't know why you're looking at me.
Oh, I'm just, I'm just.
Like, do I know?
No.
Oh, okay, I, I don't.
Mark can tell everybody.
No, that, that, I know, obviously I know the Wyland name, do you know Jamie Wyland? No? No?
I think it's a.
I think it's relation.
Okay, okay.
To the officer that passed away.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah.
I think he, she's married to the brother of
He's in the corner, okay. Oh, okay.
Officer that passed away.
Oh, good.
Who, I hear you're right, you're running?
Uh, for county board.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I thought I was running for my district and now my district got moved out to Ringel.
And reassigned.
So it's, I thought I was nineteen or twenty and now I find out that I'm actually in twenty-two and Al Christensen is not running.
Okay.
I thought I, I thought I'd be a shoo-in and now I find out that this um, and, and I, I wanna talk to him and see what, what he's thinking. I just, I just think it's important to have a little more representation, you know, that actually brings up uh Weston. Uh, some trustees, and I'm gonna name Nate, have commented on, on some of, some of the five, I don't wanna name many of them, but uh, some don't even return his phone calls when he has some issues on the county board. Um, and, and I know you could talk to other people on the county board, but, so, but I understand that that person that you is not gonna run.
Uh, Mr. President, we may be.
Oh, yeah, yeah, well, you brought it up, so. All right, so let's go to findings, um, Jess, sorry about that, you're, you're right, I am off topic.
Um, we are looking for another person at our finance three, so if anyone has any recommendations. Um, definitely.
We did, we did find one tonight, a date.
Found one tonight, but we also lost one tonight, so.
That was.
I don't know how you feel about it, but I, I, I had a phone call recently from John Jacobs.
Oh.
So. Like the look on your face there.
Yeah, yeah. I wouldn't be that in favor of that, but we'll see, yeah, so I got a couple other phone calls I, I'm gonna make too. Okay.
I have nothing else to say.
Nothing else, uh, nothing under fire and EMS, um, Tarkson Rec, Sean?
Um, I did have a report in the fact, if, uh, the only thing I need to, or have update on is the uh Weston Norman House demolition will not take place till Wednesday of this week.
So the Weston School, excuse me, oh, 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 hello, hey, hey, we're having a discussion here, excuse me. I'll have to split you up if you can.
Yeah, the Norman House on Sturmberg, uh, the demolition will take place on Wednesday of this week.
Okay, so the one that's been, all this stuff about all these ties to state money.
Time, yes, yeah.
Finally?
Finally.
That's awesome, good, good stuff to hear there.
I was waiting for it to just manually fall in.
I thought somebody would just pull it, yeah, off, you know, so, thank you.
Yep.
Uh, let's see, planning and development.
Have anything additional?
Nothing additional, okay. Um, please?
Uh, just a brief staffing update, we're fully hired, we don't have to hire anybody since twenty sixteen, so.
Wow.
Um, our latest is in field training and um, we only have one other person off on FMLA leave right now, but we'll be looking to hire the additional person sometime in January of next year.
So our latest is the one from Washington State?
Yes.
Good, that's good.
Also feel to have a full staff?
Well, it's nice for patrol since they, you know, have more than three on at a time, so.
Cause job for all those year were sparse.
How did the, how did you guys fare during the uh storm?
Uh, the major storms, we don't have as much issues with, believe it or not, it's, you know, when they're prepared and you hear about them, it's the the lighter ones that, you know, really aren't anticipated where you get a dusting, we have more crashes than we do the large ones, so.
Those dustings are slippery though, yeah. Okay, thank you, um, public works, Michael?
Um, I don't know, not quite a whole lot to add, um, we are, we did conduct our mechanic interviews uh last week, so. But hopefully have a candidate selected uh this week and have somebody start around the first of the year. Um, filling in that and then I did kinda just kinda go over what our uh, snow response is, um, we didn't have public works on Monday, but uh, one of my goals is to try to update our snow packet, we've had a couple of changes since twenty fourteen when we last officially adopted our, still a nice response, so.
Can I, just, ye, I just wanna express a deep appreciation to the uh, um, to our, uh, to our staff at the Public Works Department, um, especially how quickly they respond to that, um, uh, to that stop sign that was knocked down right by Augustine and Von Kennel, that's right outside my house, so. I had phone call from my mom and she was just quickly, I was amazed at how fast, uh, we just responded to it, so I really appreciate, uh, super.
Oh, or if anybody finds Schofield Ave and Von Kennel street signs sitting around, um, they went missing last week, so.
Von Kennel and Schofield Ave?
Yeah.
Well, eh, how many?
Well, it was just the one.
Oh, just that one?
Through section.
Okay, all right. Um, I, I don't know and I don't.
Not at all or just the sign?
Just the sign.
Oh, I, I don't want you to name who it is, but um, who, whoever had a follow, uh, Tony? Apparently there was some big shoes to follow for snowballing, so he did our neighborhood and I get quite a few phone calls, it's getting better, but you know, he, he did some different things, uh, some nice things. And uh, I, I wonder if he knows that, so, anyway, good.
Your, uh, the snowplow crew also did a phenomenal job uh during the storm.
Okay, um, thank you, uh, technology, uh, Nate, are you on?
I am, I have nothing to add.
Nothing to add, um, anybody wanna drill Nate, excuse me, ask question? No?
So there was a minor glitch that happened, what the heck was that?
What?
Yeah, Facebook was.
That Facebook. Yeah, you gotta pay attention, Nate.
Yep.
Stay engaged, stay engaged. All right, thank you, Nate. Uh, and uh, under thirty-five, we have Wassa Central Wisconsin Convention and Visitor Bureau, Tim, would you like to make a comment?
Or let's see.
Yeah, I'll just uh, comment on the direction of where we're headed, thank you for having me again. Um, two months ago, my first day on the job was at this meeting and uh, here I am again, so, uh, I wanted to say a couple of things, thank you for the funding. Um, that is so helpful and it allows us to be able to round the corner, um, in terms of reinventing the CVB to be the premier destination marketing organization for Weston and the entire Marathon County uh, area. Um, a couple of things I just wanna let you know about, we have uh, recreated, well, we've created a new mission, a new logo is coming soon. But we've also invested, uh, the board just approved a fifty-five thousand dollar uh, plan for us to uh, upgrade our website with a company called Simple View, they work with uh, all the premier DMOs, destination marketing organizations, everybody from Stevens Point to uh, Managua, Eau Claire, The Dells, Madison, Chicago, Las Vegas. And we, it's a seven-month process that we'll be going through with them and it will allow the community to be able to put in content and businesses and events. Uh, we also have partnered with Sherpa, which is an online presence as well and every stakeholder, every organization, every event in Marathon County uh, has access to be able to create experiences, to create events through that. Um, we rolled out today, uh, marketingwassau.com, just a website so that partners can sign up to Sherpa and ultimately to Simple View. We're also uh, having ongoing marketing get-togethers, so if you know anybody that's in marketing uh, that markets for any position, any event, any organization in the Weston area, have them go to marketingwassau.com to sign up to attend our events. Um, we uh, are so happy to be able to uh, support really, really great events and great organizations with grants and support and marketing help, you know, among them, uh, uh, the uh, the Mung Festival, um, and then Taste and Glow, which is uh, getting a great support from uh, Weston as well. And we have a new board, we have a new uh, interim board president, this trustee over here, he brings on.
Good job, ye.
Nice to see you, ye.
I was voluntold to be that.
Yes, yes, we twisted his arm, not too hard, no, he was willing to step in for uh, you know, to be the interim president and offers uh, some much-needed uh, wisdom and direction. And then we've also added Greg Fisher from the GM of Granite Peak and Tim Van Diot uh, from the Gudorzi Group as well, we have increased our, we've changed our bylaws, so we're increasing the number of board members, the board directors that we can have to eighteen. And uh, we've done a number of different things and then I think the thing I'm most proud of is we've stayed in constant contact with the village. Uh, it's important for us to give them any information, to give you anything that you need, um, we have nothing to hide. Uh, they've uh, been great in asking for things and, you know, we're, we're so uh, happy to give it to you, so, that's it.
Yeah, I wanna make a comment, but um, I know that this board was very concerned about transparency, about minutes, budgets, et cetera, and I, I do wanna express a deep appreciation to Tim for making that all available on our, on the website as well, so if anybody's ever interested in what they're gonna talk about or the minutes, you can access it just like open records as well too, uh, like just like any governmental meetings as well too.
Yep, and the, the extension is actually visitwassau.com forward slash board. You'll be able to see what we just posted for our last meeting early this week on Monday.
Uh, two questions or just statements, wherever, where are you meeting now?
We are meeting remotely, so uh, we uh, we will occasionally meet at the Mung American Center. Um, for meetings or get-togethers, we'll go to wherever a meeting, you know, needs to take place. Uh, the board had, previous to me, uh, coming on board, had purchased the uh, property off of County Road NN across the interstate from the Hilton, uh, you may have known it and visited it as the old Shaky's Building.
Many a times.
Yes, and so, uh, it has mold and it has asbestos, which is not a big shock. So um, that's a, uh, inherited issue that I have and so, we'll be looking at every option, be looking at creating a plan as well. Uh, I did uh, apply for an ARPA grant for capital improvements, uh, through uh, the state tourism, had a, a grant that we applied for. We should hear any day now whether that, we, we got any of that money, but the, the nice thing about the But the, the nice thing about the, uh, we did get this great ARPA grant for, uh, marketing to the tune of three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. And, you know, our new online plans, the fifty-five thousand will go from that, so, uh, yeah.
I, uh, I couldn't be more pleased, uh, with you as a selection, uh, with the transparency, uh, from trustees, Zong and yourself and your team. And, uh, it's, it's completely off my list, uh, anything, I, I'm just waiting to hear the good news and, and very happy for all the hoteliers and the people visiting the area and, uh, very excited, so thank you.
Thanks very much.
So, good.
Have a happy holidays.
Hey, you too, Merry Christmas. Alright, that was nice. Um, work product transmittals, um, November building permits, November budgets, uh, let's just do building permits first.
Move to acknowledge items thirty-six and thirty-seven concurrently?
I guess not, so motion by Nate, second by?
Second.
By Zong? Um, all those, uh, any more in the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, opposed, so carried, thank you, Tim. Uh, consent agenda, what's your pleasure?
Want to approve thirty-nine, forty, forty-one and forty-two.
Motion by Ermly?
Second.
Second by, excuse me? Yes, she said it, uh, second by Feeny? Uh, any more in the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried, uh, real quick, Michael, um, I just wanna ask you a quick question on the interviews for the mechanic. Is the new, uh, supervisor, the new, uh, is he also involved?
Yes, he was.
Okay, thank you, I think that's just important to.
Yeah.
Put that off in a good way.
He's gonna be the one working with him more.
Yep, thank you, uh, number forty-four ordinances, ordinance number twenty-one dash zero three four. An ordinance to amend Article six dash eleven licensing fees, section six point one oh two license restrictions, deleted taxes, assessments, other claims, section six point one oh three retail liquor and beer license fees, section six point one oh four issuance of alcohol beverage licenses.
So, I have a question.
Go ahead.
There wasn't a RFC on this, so I, I was kinda like wandering around in the dark on this, it's like.
No, I, um, apologized, I, I just didn't get time to finish the RFC, I had so many problems trying to get the ordinance done on the new immunity code software and the resolutions, that I just, I ran out of time to get an RFC done. But I knew that attorney, he was going to be here, so I figured that, um, if you don't mind, you could start us out and, and explain your proposal?
Thanks for the.
Well, I think the idea was to, to have our alcohol license, uh, ordinance follow the state law. And so, because there were so many changes made, um, I drafted it, I thought, in a way that tried to simplify it, even though it's not that simple of, uh, process. And, uh, there's also a, uh, um, a, a breakdown of steps to follow, I think, that I did too, I don't know if the board has seen that yet or not, but.
That's on the agenda, the guidebook you mean?
Yeah, the guy, the, the handling of a, of a, uh, an operator's license, that's really where the law changed the most. Uh, tying your hands, uh, to when, you know, you, you can deny them essentially, so. So those were the reasons for the changes, it was all kind of together with our last discussion about creating a mini handbook for operators' licenses, so we knew a procedure we could follow uh, that was consistent with the new state law and, uh, uh, and the two, I guess, go together, is how we put it, so. Uh, so I tried to change the, the, the steps that were taken in order to evaluate an operator's license uh, so that we would, uh, eliminate, uh, lawyer involvement as much as possible. And, uh, so the only time that I would be involved would be if the police chief determines, uh, if the police chief does his background check and there are no exempt offenses, but there are offenses, and we have to determine whether those offenses, those offenses are substantially related to the licensing activity, that's the only real time I think you need a, a lawyer's analysis to see if there is a connection there by which you could deny the license. And so that's the step at which, uh, I would confer with the clerk on, on the substantial relationship test. Uh, but if it's an exempt offense, uh, and we find that out from the police chief, we deny because there's no reason to continue with any further analysis at that point. Um, obviously, if there is no, uh, criminal convictions, then I'm not needed either, it goes immediately to Sherry and she approves, so.
Yeah.
One thing, one thing I did notice that's, uh, a pretty big change is that the way I understand it is that the clerk will be able to determine, so there's a recommendation to deny, then the clerk can take in the rehabilitation information and review that, and I don't need to bring that to the board, that's the way I understand the, the ordinance.
I think that, well, I, I think you can do that, um, and decide not to deny it. I mean, if someone has information that would warrant them getting the license, then we can save the whole, you know, board hearing trip here if it's one of those situations where your hands are tied again.
Wouldn't that also save the chief sometime?
Yeah.
Wouldn't he come to that conclusion first?
It would save everybody's time, I think if, if, uh, I mean, I would like to get involved earlier in the process. So when we decide that there's a substantial relationship, if we find that, we can send a letter to the person indicating why we're denying and ask them to submit that information to Sherry. And if, if they provide that information and the statute says you have to grant it, then the board could give Sherry the authority to go ahead and grant those, and then we're not taking up your meeting time.
Okay. Any questions? I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry, Tim?
I just saw it, maybe it's already been addressed, so I see it struck out that we can't require payment of taxes and things like that anymore for a license, is that correct? But we can do it if we do it for all of them?
I think it's for people.
Right, right.
But not the premise, right?
Yeah, I think that, uh.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, that, that's subject to your decision as a board, how you wanna do that. Uh, I, I think either you have to include that language in every license that you provide to an individual, like a dog license, whatever other licensing activities there are, uh, or you take it out, but you have to be consistent, that's it.
But we can keep it for businesses, cause that's the most of the ones.
Okay, we left it in there for the premise.
Okay, I see, I just saw it struck out and I was like, oh, okay.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, I saw that too and it's like, wait a minute.
Yeah, it was like, oh no.
So we don't have a leash on anybody anymore?
There's a few that won't pay until license time.
Well, I, I think sometimes implying, you know, that you have to pay, it'd be the worst thing, they'll kinda leave it in there, so. I, um, I get, I'm trying to read some of this, but I keep thinking of all my presents that I get to open up in a couple days with all this being red and green. So, whoever chose those colors, um, I have, my attention span changes so quickly, so. But anyway, I think it's kinda cute. Uh, if you did it, uh, Matt, then it's not cute. Smart or handsome or something.
That's the.
Efficient.
That's the new, that's the new software, Mark.
Are you serious, they call seasonal? Seasonal? Not, you're just teasing.
No, it does.
You can change, so. Change those colors.
Yeah, okay, so orange and brown and, you're just teasing.
No.
No, she's not.
They've all been like this, they've all been like this, at least for the last couple of months.
Is this a, a Word document?
I think it's.
Could change the color scheme.
It's standing out more because there's so many changes in this one.
Okay. Well.
It is, we have a new look a lot like the two sides.
Ah, there we go, uh, we're definitely outside.
Everywhere we go. You just have to take a look at the five.
So we are looking for a motion?
Motion to approve the changes, I was looking for the thing and I lost my pages.
Ordinance twenty-one dash zero three four? Okay.
On the computer, I can't.
Motion by Ermly, second by?
Second.
By, uh, Husheng had his hand up real quick there.
That would be ordinance number twenty-one zero thirty-four.
Back to Mondo, um, any more on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried, resolutions number forty-five. Resolution number twenty-two-one dash zero three-three, a resolution to amend the village fee schedule for aquatic center fees. Your pleasure? Second, move to approve by Husheng, uh, second by Yi, any more in the discussion?
It was approved by the.
Yes.
Yeah, I think in forty-five and forty-six.
Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried, forty-six, resolution number twenty-two-one dash zero three-four, resolution to amend the village fees schedule for Safer Fire Department Emergency Medical Services fees, move to approve, move to approve by Zong.
Second.
Second by Feeny, on the question?
Mr. Chairman, just so that the board knows, this was passed by the Safer Board of Directors.
Correct, yes it was.
So.
Can I just ask a question, was there any, um, comments made from, uh, Safer, the Safer Board that we should be aware of?
No, other than the fact that we, uh, it's based upon our ambulance billing service of LifeQuest and they try to keep it within a regional norm, so if we charge too much, we're not gonna get what we want anyway. Um, and we tried to keep it in line with the city of Wausau's schedule also, so that we're not.
Yeah.
Competing wildly different.
That's, the, the point is, four years ago, I believe we were competing and, and we, we can't, in this business, we should not be competing. And we should be being paid for what our services are. And, um, so we did get close, very, very close to Wausau, some were over, some were under. Um, but I, we had a very good, healthy discussion and unanimously we decided, uh, five plus, that this is the direction we wanna go. With, with the, um, with the personnel from the fire department too, Yi?
Just, just a follow-up here, um, I, I guess I'm just kinda, you know, and it's more of a, uh, for. Do we know what's driving up the costs, uh, the, the cost of these medical fees as well?
Mostly it's related to, uh, uh, fuel, staffing, I mean, we've had to increase, uh, staffing and, and, and just like everyone else, they get a pay raise, it's calculated very closely to how many people, for how many hours, what, in fact, you'll see, they also can charge for defibrillating, if any of you are familiar with EMS services. Each oxygen, there's a violation and, uh, the reimbursement, it's also tied fairly close to the reimbursement that is normal, if you charge more, you aren't gonna get it anyway, in fact, uh, Medicare is one of the drivers of how much they'll pay, and they also take a look at regional, if you're way out of line, you'll, you'll get pulled back because you're only gonna get what they, in the same way, some of the private carriers are doing the same thing, they will not pay excessive fees.
And also to the fact that we're probably getting a fifty percent, uh, payback on ambulances.
Which is average.
Which is average, but it's, it's really hard to stomach when you're only, you know, you're, uh, you know, only getting half of what you're charging for, and we're also, um, going after transfers, much, much harder. And, uh, there's some really, really big dollars, um, that help us, you know, with the entire, you know, mix. And those transfers are, can be anywhere from fifteen to twenty-five dollars a mile. It's, um, I, I actually asked several times because I thought they kept misstating it, but those are actually the numbers.
It's, um, I don't know the exact figures, but we are, I think it was at least two hundred thousand dollars to the block this year, mainly because of, we've been so busy. Fortunately, the police department can't make money off of being busy.
Correct.
So, um, with, with no more discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried, number forty-seven, update on American Rescue Plan ARPA funds.
So, finance decided to, we've watched the different webinars, trying to keep up with all the different information out there, so we thought we'd put something together for you guys, just as a quick update and hopefully, next year, we really need to start thinking about how we wanna strategize to use the funding. Here's over here, there's a funding strategy and timeline.
I'm cold.
There's lots.
The men's bathroom is always warm, so, just so you know.
There's lots of federal funding opportunities for us and we need to strategically plan how to use those funds.
Um, so, there's lots of federal funding floating around, the ARPA is the main one that we're working with right now. So we already received one point one million of that and we're expecting to receive another one point one million in twenty-twenty-two. The costs have to be incurred after March third, twenty-twenty-one, and then we have to expend or commit those funds by December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. So if they're committed, as in like we have a project that we sent a contract for, we have until December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-six to spend those. Also, coming into the mix are the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act funds that will be coming down um, and potentially the Build Back Better Act, it's a lot of fees, um.
The infrastructure was actually passed at the federal level, um, we're waiting a lot, allocation.
Yeah.
The, the state is waiting to hear their allocations from the federal government. Um, we were in a webinar just last week, um, the, the lead, the webinar, the DOT secretaries on there, and then they had some meeting with the PSC, talking about the water opportunities and then the broadband opportunities. Build Back Better is not approved yet at the federal level, so I'm curious to see what's actually getting come out of that.
Okay.
I had a question.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Bart.
I know I read it in here somewhere, but I cannot remember what, on the interest earned on this money that we, uh,
That's all ours.
There are some designation for that? Does it have to stay in this, this fund or can we use it for general funds? We can?
Yes.
Three hundred and twenty-seven dollars already, I saw.
Well, yeah, I mean, I know it's not.
Aren't you watching that new big TV that you bought? Or what? Or you're putting this on there, okay?
You know, but I, I, I remember reading about interest, but I couldn't remember what I finally, you know, determined that it, what it could be or couldn't be.
Normally with your federal funds, there's restrictions like that, where you have to use the interest on the federally approved program, project that you got the funds for, but, um, with this, they did not have those.
Okay, so we can use.
Did they forget?
Three hundred and whatever.
You know, forgot, no?
They have it in there.
Down there.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
That's also generous.
Can I ask just, it's a naive question here, we, uh, the, if interest that we generate, that's just a normal bank, uh, bank, uh, the, uh, the interest that we generate just for having that account there, right? Uh, so I guess the follow-up question for it would be, we really can't invest this into something else though, correct? To generate a higher interest, I'm just kinda curious.
On the CD or?
If you're talking about the whole fund.
Yeah, I mean, you're just throwing an idea, a question out there, I'm not, I'm not even sure that's even legal, you know, I'm.
No, you're allowed to invest it.
But you attract, I mean, it.
It has to be liquidated though, so.
Yeah, it, you have to have a plan of, this is how much we're gonna spend when and kinda know that, and you'd have to kinda have your cash flows.
It has to be in short term.
Yes, yes.
And.
I just, I, I remember reading, but not actually what we could or couldn't do, it didn't seem like it was just free money, I mean.
Never free.
You know, well, I know, but that it wasn't some restrictions on it, and I thought I might have missed that, so that's why.
Mr. President?
Yes.
And I, I just wanna clarify, just to clarify my intention, that, you know, I was just kinda curious, uh, to see, you know, I'm just throwing that out there potentially. But it was just a critical thought, like throwing it out there, but, cause right now, we don't have it really committed somewhere yet. Um, it, it, it wouldn't make more sense for us to looking to do something like that, just so we generate some additional funding. I mean, it's maybe enough to buy a stapler, but I mean, you know, a couple other things, but I mean.
A stapler, thank you.
Well, yeah, but, but you know, um, I mean, I would rather just make a little money from it as well too, that could benefit our general, our general fund, but just an idea, throwing that out there.
That's, that's a great question. And, and a better understanding. Alright, so this is just, uh, uh, information only, correct?
Yeah.
And this dovetails into forty-eight, new business?
Yes.
Okay, so moving on to new business, or, no, I'm sorry.
We're not done, Mark's done with our presentation.
Well, several of us saw this already, so, I'm sorry, so, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Who was the presenter pointing? That doesn't even like ignore you.
Yeah, I, I, I actually caught this on the front of my eye and I felt bad that I did that, so go ahead.
So, this is from Viger Tilly, one of the webinars that we attended, uh, just an overview of the funds and kind of the objectives of them to keep in mind as we think about how we want to spend those. Uh, just an overview of the funds and kind of the objectives of them to keep in mind as we think about how we want to spend those. So, American Rescue Plan is, uh, kind of a continuation of CARES, where the goal is really to support like COVID nineteen response to help governments who lost revenue as a result of things like that. Um, and then just kinda to stabilize the economy for households and businesses. And then the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act is, uh, the funding is coming, and its main goal is basically to maintain infrastructure. Cause there is a nationwide issue where infrastructure is falling apart and needs help. So, do you have anything to add? Keep the next short. So this is just all of the funds, like all of the different buckets for where the funds went. It's just interesting seeing how much went where and how many different uses there are.
Okay, see questions?
Um, the strategy is to slow down and not spend funds a lot once, um, but you should really.
That's why I say you're an animal.
Plan not using the funds, um, to benefit the community, that's where the everyone needs to get on the same page to see what we really want to use the funds for, and how can we benefit the community as well.
So for the strategy, there's two subsets, you kinda have the compliance and reporting, which is what finance is going to have to deal with from the villages to comply with. Um, and then you also have how we want to strategize to manage and spend the funds. So, compliance and reporting, we need to work on getting policies and processes in place, such as internal controls that comply with uniform guidance, and then also a procurement policy, and then figure out what kind of documentation requirements we want to have. Uh, we will be subject to a single audit if we spend seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in funds, which, based on how much we're getting, probably going to happen, yeah. And then as far as managing and spending them, we need to come up with kind of a long-term plan, how do we wanna use those to meet community needs between this and the infrastructure funds? Um, do we wanna involve the community? Do we wanna collaborate with other entities? Um, like Yi said, potentially investing the funds until we're ready to spend them, so we can get some interest. Um, just trying to look at how to strategically spend them to get the most community benefit.
Um, the audits, well, as we said before, it will be a single audit required when we spend seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars or more in one year. His end of calendar year, January through December. Um, the single audit does is they do test compliance with the federal requirements, so they're gonna look at in our internal controls, they're gonna look at our policies, our procedures, to make sure that we are spending and have the controls in place to make sure the federal, federal funds are spent correctly. Um, internal controls, um, in the uniform guidance states that non-federal entities must establish and maintain effective internal controls over federal awards. Um, you need to make sure that the controls are in place, to make sure that those that are in control of these federal monies are familiar with the grant requirements, and making sure that the funds are spent properly.
I gotta, guess I do have a, I kinda asked it before, and then I realized that I stated it wrong, but the auditor Baker to, whatever, the finance person, I mean, is there someone that is going to be able to help you getting some of this, I mean, is that what this company is gonna do, or?
So.
I mean, that's a big, that's a big thing to try to get all that together to make sure we're in compliance. I guess, the funding part of it, I can understand, you know, but I, I'm concerned that who is going to be checking to make sure we're, you know, that's a.
Baker Tilly, part of their arm of their company is auditing, so, um, we're more than likely gonna get some people who've been on audit, so they have a checklist of items that they know are requirements in these federal awards, that they're gonna make sure, look through our policies and procedures, and make sure that we, they can check off the boxes, that they are required to, and looking through our, our books and our procedures.
Okay, they're gonna be able to handle that, too.
That's what they're gonna help us with.
Okay.
So normally, you, we would say, we'd go to Kerber Rose and say, please help us get this together, but it's not right because they can't, because they'll be auditing it, so.
Right.
We reached out to this other company who was very familiar with single audits, and instead of Jenna and I reading through this uniform guidance, which is way too many pages.
It's huge.
They will, that's their expertise, so they're gonna be able to spend a lot less time, um, and walk us through it and make sure we got everything in order.
So they're doing more than just monitoring the funds to make sure we're spending them in the right place.
They're not monitoring the funds, this is solely.
Oh, yeah, but I know.
To make sure that we are in compliance with the federal laws.
Okay.
If we want to engage with them in further, um, more in depth, a different scope than what's in our engagement letter, that's another opportunity, and that's when we come together as a group and we talk about the spending of the federal funds, that could be something where we bring in an outside party, such as them who have like five people on staff that had read, read from the back of this, um, ARPA, ARPA paperwork.
Okay, so they're doing more than what I was thinking you were saying, okay.
No, they're, we could get them to come in, but right now, we, this engagement letter that we have from them is solely to look through our internal controls, policies, and just.
Okay. Thank you.
So, the procurement policy is the other thing. We had one that Michael put together, I think, a few years ago, but we need to make sure that it's up to basically par with the uniform guidance, so that's something that Baker Tilly will more than likely be helping us look at as well.
That standard looks different than the state standard.
For procurement?
Yeah, isn't it, uh, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars, or?
So twenty-five thousand is for a public works project, but that's the only spot that twenty-five thousand is a.
Is mentioned, okay.
Is mentioned, and that's just a requirement for bidding.
Okay, well, I thought I heard that somewhere.
So, for us, like, if we were to go, um, look for a contract with an outside party just to do anything, we would need to follow those rules with the procurement, so it goes above and beyond just public works projects.
Yeah, basically, anything we buy, it's gonna have lots of stipulations, potentially.
Potentially.
Then I'm worried what's the paperwork's going to look like the next time someone wants to buy a stapler.
If they charge this account?
If they charge, if it's over ten thousand dollars, you'll have some more paperwork.
Yeah, it's unfair.
Yeah, it's not so much undertakes. Um, Baker Tilly, this is their compass, it's meeting each community where you are at, so, this is the ongoing strategic collaboration. Basically, two steps to making sure that the funds are spent properly.
Yeah, just kind of making sure that you're spending them in the best way for the community, by making sure you kinda strategically know where you're going, you can come up with a plan, and then go from there. Make sure you're spending the funds on the way that makes the most sense for what they are, especially because there's a lot of other sources and a lot of other entities that like, we can say, oh, we can spend this much on this project, but if we were to partner with this other place, you know, maybe it could be more of like a fifty fifty, or we could get a cheap loan or something to complete something versus funding it all, just with the cash that we have, where we could accomplish more.
How are we gonna know about the more?
So that's strategically, we will have to look at that, that's something Baker Tilly helps with, that potentially we could look at, or if there's other organizations around here that already do that.
They will determine if it's, if it's the best, but they won't go out and look for the more.
So.
The, the, the possible partnerships, the possible this, the possible that.
So they're familiar with all of that, um, that's something we could potentially.
Then why don't they just tell us where we should put the money? If, if they know where all these, you know, partners are, and what the best projects are, wouldn't they just rank them and tell them, us what to do with it?
So the best projects are the ones.
If they're able to improve it, yeah.
Are the ones that the community would want to do, so they're not gonna look at it and feel like, you should do this.
Okay.
They're gonna say, okay, hey, you know, board, hey, Village of Weston, what does your community need, you know, come up with? Kinda ties in with like a strategic plan, kinda where you wanna be.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Lauren, I think it also ties into our, uh, capital improvement programs, too. I, it's my understanding that they're looking for, the, the quote is shovel-ready projects. So, when some of these point to transportation.
Every day.
Water, and I mean, we've all had, we've been working on both those issues for quite some time.
Yeah.
So I would assume Baker Tilly would say, well, would give us guidance, hey, that may not qualify, but you have another project over here that might qualify, or not?
If we were to do that with them, so our current scope, yeah, is mainly just to look at internal controls.
Okay.
And whatnot, make sure that we're in compliance, so we know like, okay, we can do this.
And it's my understanding, whatever we expend is also, we can take out of that fund to pay them.
Yes. Yeah, we covered that in finance, right? Yeah, okay.
So, we keep bringing this up as community goals, and basically working to get the best use of our funds, but this definitely is just gonna be coming back to the board, I mean, board could say, no, we want all funds, we got safer, we got EMPD, and the rest is going to a OR project, I mean, we can decide what we wanna do with the funds, we're just bringing out, um, these ideas and trying to get everyone to think of what is the best use of these funds, so. It's just something we wanted to throw out there, keep the wheels turning, and, um, sharing the information that we learn. That's what we're getting from a lot of webinars, is just trying to think of what's the best use of the fund. It's a one-time thing, once in a lifetime, hopefully, once in a lifetime opportunity, so.
Okay.
So we kind of already hit on these, basically, need to figure out where our funding sources are, get our documentation in order. Um, and then figure out how to comply with the reporting and minimize the village's risk.
Next item, we're looking for approval to get Baker Tilly to assist in making sure that our processes, policies, and procedures are in compliance with federal guidelines. Um, the engagement letter provided has an amount not to exceed ten thousand, the finance committee recommended five, which is appropriate. And we, it's not like we're recreating, you know, we have this stuff in order, we just want someone to review it with us, really talk through it, make sure we got all the ice dotted.
So, under new business forty eight, outside assistance for ARPA compliance is what is posted to the board, and Jessica just said that, well, two, you know, the three of us here, um, that five thousand hours is approved by finance, and so, what's your pleasure?
I make a, excuse me, I make a motion. Um, the board approved the contract with Baker Tilly and use ERPA funds up to five thousand dollars to insist in ensuring the village compliance with the single audit guidelines.
Second, motion by Ermeling, second by Peeny, any more on the discussion? Yep.
How'd you come up with ten thousand?
Um, so that was the recommendation from Baker Tilly, cause anything over ten thousand, we'd have to have special, um, procurement procedures that we follow.
So they went to the limit, but, you know, if, if we go more, I mean, we could go more, but.
We can go more, we'll bring it back if we need to, we shouldn't need to, um, hopefully, just getting compliant, it shouldn't cost that much money, we just wanted some expertise, the speed of the process.
So you don't have any number from Baker Tilly?
No.
For, oh, you mean for the car? For the cost?
It's per hour, yeah. But that should've been on your desk, on your other side. Side, there you go, there should be, uh, you know what, maybe, um, maybe Bob took it, yeah, maybe Bob took his, cause Bob was sitting in the middle seat. Yeah. That, that was sitting at all the seats, but Bob might have grabbed that, yeah. That makes sense.
I'm good.
Okay, alright, thank you. Any more discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Uh, forty nine, two thousand twenty-one budget amendments.
So, I brought this forward because when we first developed budget, we had some unknowns, and by the end of the year, we have certain lines that um, are over and some that are under. On the next page, you'll see a spreadsheet of the accounts specifically listed, um, where they are today, the budget, um, what we're anticipating yet this year, and then they requested a, a budget amendment for each line.
And finance did approve.
Um, the big thing, I guess I wanted to point out, is the payoff for safer, it's a hundred and three thousand. It's an unbudgeted item, I took a gamble this year, um, expenditure rate limits are expenditures. Um, eighty thousand has a lot to lose, so, what I did is, we were hoping that we'd have enough funds to pay safer off, and we did. It was a really, you know, it was a gamble, but we got our expenditure restraint, and we're able to pay off safer, it's a win-win. We're pretty lucky, so.
What's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve amendments as approved.
Motion to approve by Zhong.
Okay.
Second by Husheng, uh, any more on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Number fifty, twenty twenty-two dental premium rates.
Um, so I brought this to finance, this, we continue to increase our fund balance for the, our dentals, so as a reminder, we are self-funded for dental. Um, we're looking at a fund balance of around ninety-eight thousand dollars, and this year, um, spoke with Corey from Spectrum. Um, our fund balance should be between twenty-five and thirty, um, a little bit over that, so our goal is to reduce the premium and see if we can get that fund balance to kinda level off. And then there's other opportunities in the future if we want to offer additional benefits. If this twenty-five percent doesn't work, we can always look at maybe offering additional benefits and see if that's something that each arc can even accept, it's a good idea, or we can continue to decrease the, the rates. The fiscal impact is approximately seventeen thousand, seven hundred and savings across all entities.
And, you know, I was gonna mention this at the finance committee, uh, meeting, but, so this is for twenty-one, correct, or twenty?
Twenty-two.
Twenty, I, I know, but off of what numbers has this been, you know, bringing up, you know, I, I'll get to my point. My, my dentist closed for all over a year, right over here in Weston, other than emergencies, and he was doing emergencies for a lot of dentists because they, a lot of them had closed, cause of a close contact, which kinda like, okay, wow, you know, you're still going on a quick trip, you're still going out to dinner, whatever. And now they're opening back up, so I wonder if this might settle off a little bit. I, I just don't wanna elongate the meeting and ask it there, and here I am now asking it now.
So we have the trends, if you go down.
Okay.
Cause I thought for sure twenty twenty-one would have increased a little bit, but we're still adding to the fund balance.
Okay.
You can see the premiums received and the expenditures, we did go up quite a bit since twenty twenty.
See, I mean, cause it's more elected, you know, you know, you know what I mean, you can kinda put off the dentist a little bit, I don't think many people have a problem putting off a dentist for a year or two.
Twenty-two year ever since this started.
Yeah, okay, you, so you've still been going to your dentist?
Same dentist.
So, same year?
Yeah, okay, I gotta switch then. Okay. Cause I don't mind going to the dentist. Alright, thank you. Um, any more needed on that? Uh, what's your pleasure?
Well, I recommend.
Okay, move to approve by Husheng, second by Ermeling, any more on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Fifty-one, capital improvement plan and borrowing update.
So, um, we worked with Brad from others to provide an update for projects from twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-four. Um, we are moving forward with borrowing a twenty-year bond, hopefully, early January, um, in the amount of nine point one million dollars. And that will be towards our municipal center, and it will be for the portions of the building that house machine. Um, we are, with the area that we can, that houses machinery and equipment, we are able to issue a twenty-year bond right away. Uh, with remainder of the building that houses administration, um, we are forced to issue an interim GOM note and then refund that with the twenty-year bond at a later time, just because of the way the state's structured it right now.
And what, what really hit home for me at the last meeting was, you know, we're, we're gonna be watching the interest rate probably going up. And so we wanna, you know, a little sense of urgency on this, right?
Yeah, exactly, hopefully, before anything happens, we can issue it in early January.
Okay, yep, Barb.
Well, just because this is always a sore spot with me, but, when I go on through these, and I, what are we doing with Prohaska Park? Well, just because this is always been a sore spot with me, but when I go on through these and I, what are we doing with Prohaska Park development for five hundred thousand?
I think we're, we're still not necessarily recommending projects right now. All we're talking about right now is.
All possible projects.
Funny, and I know there's some things in this projected plan, but I guess each of these certainly would come to you individually anyway.
No, because it's.
And I think, yeah, we might, I suppose we're in a dilemma. What do we want to do with the grass department? It's a decision we made.
Give it to somebody.
I don't think we have an option. I think we have to, we have obligated to develop it as a park. Yeah. As part of the deal, wasn't it part of the sale deal?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, so the, the projects listed in there through twenty twenty-four were ones that were approved as part of the C I P back in twenty twenty. So, those had changed.
They were approved in terms of spending level.
In general.
Yes, yes. So, and that's another question. If we're still comfortable with the same spending level. But that's a question that we come, coming up later.
Oh, I wish somewhere, somewhere along the line on, I won't beat this to death. I did it when we were going to buy it, so. That we figure out something to do with that. It just sits there. And every time I drive by it, my blood pressure goes up, you know?
Something as simple as a hiking and biking trail.
Yeah, I mean, something. I, it's, it was, uh, well.
How big is the park? How big is Prohaska?
Maybe acres?
Maybe make it a place where you just go smash stuff, get your anxiety out, just smash stuff.
And I can order.
Leave it dirty, leave it filthy, and where people can spray paint stuff and graffiti everything instead of our bridges.
Put a shooting range.
Uh, nah, you know, that might, how do you interact with other people there? I'm saying just to get, get everything out. Just go there, just de-stress for forty-five minutes. Yeah, you know, yeah, yeah.
Paint, paint.
Or, yeah, paint, you know, anything. Just, you know, put a fake bridge there and paint the hell out of it.
President, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Please do.
It would make, I recommend a motion to recommend the staff continues to prepare C I P for
Yep.
adoption following, uh, the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-six financial plan, but prepared by others.
Yeah, I'll second.
Thank you. Any more in discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? So carried. Thank you.
Now we'll move forward with the, what was approved, and we'll come back with more projects and details for the board.
I have no attention span, so thank you for noticing that. Uh, fifty-two, election, it's the truth. I don't, I can, I can go with the best, so. Fifty-two, election inspectors for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three term.
This is my list of election inspectors.
Is that Heather? What do I need to do with this? Was this part of that?
I have the, I have a copy of that already.
Thank you.
So you can keep it if you'd like, or, um, I can take it. Um, I contacted, um, my alternates, and then the Democrat and Republican Party represented contacted the rest. So this is a mix of people. Some people are unaffiliated, and some people, um, chose to be on a list. Whether it's Democrat or Republican, those people will be contacted first to work the elections.
Okay.
And once I get through those people, um, and I still need more people, then I can move to my alternate list.
And is this all happening at one location again?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Oh, that's a lot of people.
Well, you figure, uh, for the presidential election, um, I think I had a little over thirty, thirty election inspectors work that election, so.
Okay.
But they work in shifts, though, is that correct?
That's true.
I, I haven't done shift work yet, um, hoping.
They're troopers. They stay there all day.
They do. Um, that's, that's maybe something the village might want to consider in the future. Um, but right now, we do fourteen-hour shifts.
Can I ask just two questions?
Sure.
I noticed that Joan Matthews is on the twice.
Oh, is she?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep.
That's a mistake.
Hmm, my mistake.
I didn't know if it was, if there was two Joan Matthews.
She's got a twin sister. Same name?
Well, if you talk to her, you, you feel like there's two. She talks more tonight.
We are getting.
Jen knows her, so she talks way faster tonight, so.
Yeah, I recommend approval.
Yep, move to approve.
Move to approve by Feeny.
Hospital.
Go ahead. Second by Ermeling. Uh, the discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Fifty-three, handbook for elected and an appointed officials. Handbook with track changes, handbook with tracked changes accepted.
Mister Chairman, could I kind of like explain this? Because I did the download and I, I had a problem finding it.
Really?
Following it. Yes, I did.
So, um.
Give me a break.
Where does that put the rest of us?
There were, there were links, because they were so huge. I couldn't, I couldn't attach them to the agenda packet. Yes.
No, that's not, hang on, let me.
Okay.
Can I give you a little synopsis? This was started.
But we, we got a chance on breaking a record here tonight, so.
I'm, I don't plan on talking.
Alright, alright.
So as you recall, the handbook was presented, two chapters were parsed out, I think it was by you, Neil.
Yep.
Chapters nine and ten.
Yep.
Given to Sherry, we shared the opportunity to renumber them. They're now chapter one and two, and some of you have seen the progress. It was then required that we go to council for verification, okay? So what I have here is, what I got, I had a call from your staff asking for assistance in doing this because it started out as to being a way, a larger project than your staff wanted to tackle at the time. So I had a conference with them. They gave it back to me with along what they had done. This is the first two pages. This is just an example of what I got back from them the first time. Because if you had to read this, you'd have to read about six versions of this. Thank you. And I'll give one to you, Sherry. And you can have the rest of them.
Oh, you forgot Barb.
Pardon?
You left me as a mushroom.
You know, you got Barb.
Sorry about that. Gosh darn it. I'll leave. So.
Even he recognized that he passed me up.
Why didn't you kick me before I went by?
I said it right away.
I wanted you to walk. You see, there he is. So after that came back, I finished doing all the citing.
Yeah.
Um, because that was one of the requirements that, that was suggested by your staff. Turned it back over to Lauren, not related, um, staff member of council's office. And this is what she returned to me after I did all the citing. Only two pages, just to give you an example of what happened. This product produced a fifty-five-page document that started out at thirty-two.
Okay.
You could see all those additions and corrections and all those that, that I had done, that were caught by council and suggestions that were.
So this was, this is given you by Matt's staff?
Staff. Okay. After I did all the sightings, the sightings took me roughly three weeks to do that. I mean, because I have all the reference materials, and I provided Sherry a copy of all the references and people. So the final product that you, that I have here is everything that was fixed, pointed out for me to fix in the document. I learned a lot about doing footnotes and sites. Never done them before. So this is the final document. Thank you. Oh, can't remember you this time, Barb.
Yes, you did. But you didn't remember the rest.
I was gonna say, you're gonna go back and grab one. We just carry on your cardio.
You know, I am going to be seventy, guys.
And girls. A young seventy.
Yeah.
That's why I was told that, that I was, I was gonna outweigh them because just the way he was watching me work out in the yard in my building.
Uh-huh.
He says.
Too happy.
Because your generation.
And I did provide you with all those files too, so.
So, Lauren, can I ask you a question just a second?
Sure you can.
Um, are you, are you asking for us to act on this now?
No.
You're asking for us to review.
I was thinking you need to read that.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna refer.
But I just wanted to explain the process. Uh, I, I'd like to thank Attorney Edie's staff. Uh, they worked really hard on this. It's quite a project. So it was a learning experience for me. I think it was a learning experience for your staff. Do you have any input, uh, Mister Edie?
No, but who gets the proceeds when you publish this and make all the money?
I suggested I publish it. I said, I can't because I technically did it on company time.
No, Maloney, you just go right ahead.
So the second time that I did that, that took another two weeks. Um, and that's the final product. Uh, I would suggest it's, if I didn't have the footnotes and the sites in there, the document would be about half as thick as it is. So, end of story.
I just want to express my deep appreciation because I know the county board also has a, you know, a, kind of a handbook for elected officials.
See, you'll.
It's gonna, it's gonna be good, and I'm hoping that once we do approve this, or I'm, I'm going to review it for the next month's meeting. But we probably will have to establish a annual rules and review committee to just kind of go through it, to make sure everything's up to date.
Well, the same thing that Sherry's brought up about our ordinances, that we need to have our view, if we have references in our, in our ordinances that refer to a state statute, you got to make sure it's still valid. Um, that also includes the electronic, conducting electronic meetings. So we had the, President Maloney and
Yeah.
Jen and I attended those meetings. There were three classes altogether that further explained, because that wasn't included the first time while conducting, thanks to COVID, conducting electronic meetings. So that's in there, it details. Um, and everybody talks about Robert's Rules of Order, but Robert's Rules of Order is not always compliant with state statute on open records and open meetings. So that's why to blindly accept something like Robert's, which the county has done. Um, just, just wanted to point that out.
Yes, they did.
Many times it's not compliant with state statutes. So if you have any questions, call Sherry.
So.
Call Lauren.
Are, do we feel good that this could come back next month?
Yes.
Right? Okay, good. Can we make that happen? Okay, good. Thank you very much.
Can I, yeah, go ahead. Can I ask one question, I guess, or maybe once again? So a question came up over the last week about the, how the public can participate, how they can make comment at an open meeting. And, uh, actually referred to council, and it's, it's really at the discretion of the board as to what or how they want to take that.
Or even if.
So now we, okay, so we, we run into the situation where some, where people want to record a video and submit that as public comment.
I'm, I'm getting those.
And I think, and my, my question is, is this a place for us to establish that rule? Or are the board's preference, or is that something separate from this document?
Can I answer, uh, this? D C R school board is also going through the same process as well too. Um, it is part of this document that you can make adjustments to. We could, I, I'm not recommending it, but obviously we could get rid of public comment entirely.
Yes, you can.
Wired by, uh, state statutes.
Except when it's a hearing, then you have to allow.
But you can set, but you can set, oh, but you can set restrictions on how you want, whether you want them to attend virtually.
In person.
In person, et cetera. So that would be part of it.
And that's not getting this at all.
So we could add it to it.
Yes.
There was a point years back that that was, when the, it first came out that that was um, open, you know, kind of not open records, but it, it, that it, by having comments, you had people coming in that wasn't on the agenda discussing stuff. And, and I mean, years ago, that, that was almost a whole conversation going under comments. Now we restrict it to a talk, and then you don't do anything, and the board doesn't even interact with them. Um, but yeah, we had taken it off, but then it, it, um, as I recall, it, it came back just because we had some criticism that we did not, that people couldn't come to the meeting and at least express some frustration or, or talk about some subject. So it got put back on again. And, but we had to be, you have to be real careful that technically the board doesn't even
Can't even sit.
Comment, you know, about what they're saying, that they just make their comment and they sit down. I mean, and then they can put it, ask to have it put on an agenda.
There is a section in there deals about public comments at meetings.
And I think that's where we can probably draft up the, you know, whether we want to, you know, when we say we limited it five minutes, but whether it has to be done in person or over WebEx, um, et cetera. Or Zoom, whatever, um, you know, but that's where we would even outline those rules and.
The rules and regulations.
So it can get pretty elaborate on these videos.
Mm-hmm.
And I, 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 I think written form or in person would be the most appropriate.
Yeah.
I don't know if five minutes is the right time. Maybe it's three minutes. Maybe it's two minutes.
Can I?
Well, if someone has, there has to be someone that, that's essentially a timekeeper.
Yeah.
How would you feel about cutting somebody off in the middle of?
Well, you know, it also could be two minutes of praise, but you know, maybe not.
Well, I, I think if you put a time limit, you can tell them.
Right.
You know, we have the time limit, and then as they're going on, you can probably say, you know, can you make a conclusion? We are, your, your time is up. We're almost up.
I also want to comment that, um, I, if we're going to allow, you know, there to be written testimonies for us to not read it during public comment period, because they could be typing several pages of, of, you know, letters, and we would read, and it would surpass the whole three-minute or five-minute rule, public comment time period that we're setting. I mean, obviously, they can always email back to everybody, and we can read it at our own time. But then, um, you know, and if they, for public comment period, we should stick strictly to just either a public comment in person or over WebEx or phone, whatever, or letter, or.
And see ya.
That may. Um, as, as far as video goes, my knee-jerk reaction is no, just because we can't really enforce any of our rules, bylaws, or soft precedents, um, via video. So I think that, um, I think Teams is fine, uh, Skype is fine, letters are fine, in-person is fine, just not via video. But, yeah, this, this is actually, it's actually good timing. I've been thinking about that more and more with what's, uh, with what happened in county board over the summer with the community for our resolution. And maybe some guidelines for both ourselves and the public might be a little bit better, but, yes.
Okay.
Okay, that's.
So, oh, I'm sorry, Barb?
Sorry, um, I guess my thought with, you know, they write us letters all the, I mean, not all the time, but we get letters or emails or whatever from, um, if they want that as a, a public comment, I, I, I don't know, then do you read it at, at the meeting? Would it be something that they would send us to the president, and then he would, you know, but if you've got two pages of?
I mean, two pages could be two or three minutes. I mean, I think the he or she as president could easily just read it, but.
But then what if they send you a ten-page letter?
No, it's, you know, the restrictions have to apply. So we, I, I would have you be, it go to the clerk as it was received. Then however, we deal with it after that.
Yeah, I, I personally think eventually it will probably have to set some sort of criteria in your sense, right, and set here to also let me restrict, but in a sense have, the criteria is to cover letters as well. I don't mind it reading, but I don't want it to surpass the whole time limit that we give it.
Right, I agree. Okay. Alright, so, you know, this is passed out next month. We're going to act on this on fifty-three, correct? All, everybody agrees?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Moving on to fifty-four, sewer lining and engineering contract. Would this be, Michael gets to talk?
If you want me to.
Uh, or, or what's your pleasure? Let's hold on. We might make this here. What's your pleasure?
Is there a question?
Uh, no, I, he said only if we want to have him talk. Okay, question for Michael, from Wu Sheng.
Insurance. I didn't see anything about insurance, nothing.
Yeah, they, they just submit their proposal, so when it comes to the contract, we'll work with Attorney Edie. I think we're pretty close to having our standard agreement figured out, so.
It always mentions insurance.
Yes.
This comes up enough, that we should all, the church should be just automatic, right?
Yeah, yes.
It's going to actually be one of the blanks to fill it, you know, so, okay.
I received the, uh, draft of the, uh, standard agreement over the weekend.
Can I see copy of it?
I, I'll get it out as soon as I.
Okay, so, so this is not to be acted on. This is just.
Yes.
Yeah, it is. It is, okay.
Engineering services contract, okay.
Or, I guess that's their proposal.
So I, I guess I'm going to act, I might now ask the same question. Is there insurance included in their proposal?
So the contract that we would end up having them sign would include the insurance requirements. So I, I did ask them for contracts. I thought we were close enough that we'd hopefully be able to give them our, our contract and not accepting their contract. Because that seems to be where the biggest conflict is, is, you know, engineering firms, their, their contracts tend to be, you know, one-sided towards benefiting them as a company.
Oh, no.
Whereas, you know, we've been working on getting our, our own village contract that then they have to sign. So I, I did not ask them for their contract proposal. So I, I did not ask them for their contract proposal, but their price based on the scope of work, which yes, will include then our insurance requirements that we want them to carry.
Mister President, so I, I guess I'll make a motion to award the engineering services proposal for the Cap Phillips Road and Sherwood Avenue Sewer Lining Project for the amount of fourteen thousand six hundred to my contingent upon us receiving the information for the insurance.
Motion by Zong.
Does that make you feel better in the, in the circumstances?
Yep.
Yeah.
Second by Nate on the discussion. I have to agree. I don't think this should be a discussion anymore. It should be automatic. I mean, this shouldn't be that we have to ask them later. Why don't we get this done right away? Because if that's an issue, it's over. So, okay.
And to the Maloney.
Yep, I'm sorry, Yi.
I just want to make a comment, express my gratitude to Michael for, are we going out for proposals for bids? Obviously, you know, I'm a big supporter of that, so I do appreciate that as well. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. So carry fifty-five, adjust aquatic center operating hours and close at seven P M.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Zong, second, second by Feeny. Any more in the discussion?
I just want to make a comment that the Parks and Recreation Committee did talk about it and they did unanimously approve this.
Um, hearing no more discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. So carry fifty-six, guidebook for evaluating arrest and conviction records when determining whether to grant or deny an operating license.
Um, attorney Edie put this together based on the new ordinance, based on the changes in state law. And I have reviewed it and so has Chief Schultz, and we don't have any issues with it. And I recommend approval of the guidebook, guidebook. And it will be passed along to chief and we'll have a copy in our office.
Outstanding.
Well, I'll move to approve the implementation of the guidebook for evaluating arrest and conviction records when determining whether to grant or deny an operator's license.
Motion by White.
Second.
Second by Feeny. Any more discussion? Yi?
So just, so basically this would, uh, obviously like the situation that occurred today, I'm still a little uneasy about something like that. Um, how, I, I guess for future references, how would be, I, I, you know.
But Christopher Harrison won, wouldn't have even come here.
Yeah, right.
It wouldn't, he wouldn't have come here. He didn't have this passed yet. And, you know, there was notification, we were following the old ordinance when we notified, when we originally notified him that the license was denied. And then he contacted us and said, hey, you know, I want to appeal. And now I'm in the middle of dealing with the attorney and we're trying to put together this.
This was the right process. This had to happen this way, as, as maybe a little tough as it was, you know, that's the way it had to happen until now we have this and now it can be handled, ready to step up.
Right.
Most of them.
Yeah, most.
Yes.
So then we wouldn't have more, much, we wouldn't have many of these hearings.
Right, correct.
Yep.
Correct.
Okay. Uh, let's see, we're in discussion.
I mean, you still could have a hearing.
Right.
If they disagreed with.
Yeah.
With how we determined. Right.
A substantially related test.
Right.
And if we found that they didn't have proof of, uh, you know, the two criteria in order to overcome that.
I think, I think what you're saying though, you're just not going to see them as much as you were seeing them.
But, but state statutes would then limit really the authority of what we're doing, you know, because we're.
And what I'm seeing here and hearing here is that most of the decisions that we're gonna make is gonna align exactly with what staff is saying because staff is doing, making the decision based off state statutes there.
But we, we won't feel in conflict, you know, with the chief. Like, and I know, I know you understand kind of, but we won't be coming to a hearing with it all up in the air. We'll kind of know the outcome, yet they're still gonna appeal and then just be.
And I'm going to work closer with the attorney. He recommends denial.
Mm-hmm.
Then I'm going to work closely with the attorney and how do we move forward with this so that we're following the laws?
Cool.
No.
Oh.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Nate.
Question, counselor, uh, is the intent for the, uh, is the intent for the responsibility to prove that all penalties have been resolved lay, intended to lay with the staff or with the applicant?
Applicant. The applicant.
Okay, yeah.
Yep. And bar.
Well, I guess then the case of like the Harris, you would, you would look at it and say, okay, you have to get a pardon before we can even consider.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
And so that you would communicate with him.
Right.
And then he would come back and apply showing proof, say, of the pardons.
And then she probably.
And she could just go ahead and then issue it. Wouldn't have to see it.
Right.
Right.
That's exactly how it would work. So when the decision is made to deny, let's say, there would be a letter saying exactly why it's being denied and what you need to provide us uh, if you want your license based on state law. And then if the person provides that within the timeframe that you give them to do that, uh, then you grant it. If they don't, then you deny it.
Now, the first one, if we could have denied it until he showed proof, well, we kind of did. In that you gave him what, two weeks or something? To show proof that.
Right.
He paid all his, his, you know, fines or whatever.
That's gonna be a wall so high for him, he won't be able to get over it.
And he says he's not, he's gonna go work there.
I wonder, I wonder.
He can't open an email in seventy-two hours. He will not be able to get over that wall, trust me. Well, plus he told his employer that he's leaving her in three to four weeks.
Like, wow.
I'm just shaking my head. I'm going, where's the week? I don't know. Well, let's go, let's go.
So we have a motion and a second, Mike.
Yep, we do. Uh, everybody in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. So carry. I know it's fun to correct me, but that's all right. Um, fifty-seven and fifty-eight are both in my hands and I probably took a few weeks off and didn't handle this correctly. But we, I guarantee you by the next meeting, I will have people that we can approve for, one for H R. Uh, now one more for finance and tourism. I think we're gonna go outside of finance. And I think Tim is actually gonna work with some people, realizes that they have to live in Weston, you know, for that.
That's.
But, um, if you weren't here, Jessica walked in and said, you know, we, we need another one for finance. And I didn't realize that you were saying to me, or the guy from, uh, no, Steven.
Mark.
Uh, yeah, from Peoples had, had resigned. And, um, so I actually, she mentioned somebody's name, it's Dave, Dave Jamwell, you know, who's on the C D A. And I.
Jamman.
Him too. And, um, and I thought that's a great choice. So I reached out to him and he said yes. So unless he can't serve because of the C D A, I think he can do both correctly, all right? So that is somebody that we can, since it's on the deal, I would like to, um, have his name on the finance committee. So for us to approve as a number.
That wouldn't be a conflict because he is on C D A, I guess.
No. Nope.
It would only be if he goes, it only is a conflict if they're on things such as the police and fire commission.
Right.
Any other committee, you can technically have anybody. You can even have people that don't live in your municipality on committee.
Yes, we actually can. We can, but I don't know if that'll fly.
I don't think it's a good idea.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And, and I think attorney Edie kind of said that the same way without like saying it in concrete. But, you know, I just don't know if that's the right thing, you know, so.
Because we have, in the past, we have had people that didn't live in the village or town on committees, in particular, DePalo.
Oh, now, for her, I'd make it acceptable. DePalo is exceptional, yeah. Okay, so I'm, for number forty-eight, Dave Jamlin, him, for appointment for finance.
Uh, I, I would like to see, I, I don't doubt him at all, but I would like to see a resume or some sort of a, um, back, some more background information prior to making an actual approval. I, I don't think it would hurt if we push it another month back, would it?
That's up to you.
But can you just tell me what his qualifications are?
Oh, he's a retired banker. He's on our C D A. He's incredible. And I think you'll get everybody on staff that will say, that'll vouch for him. And, but if you want to look at a sheet of paper on his resume, I'm, I'm sure we can work one up. I think it's gonna be, I think I'm gonna actually have staff do it because I think it'll insult him if I ask him to do that, so.
I just wanted to know, you know, what, what his qualifications are. I don't, I don't know the gentleman other than he's on the C D A.
He's on the C D A.
I've worked with him on the C D A, but I mean, he's very thorough.
He's extremely thorough.
Well, I don't have a problem.
Yeah.
I don't know what.
Uh, he's, he thinks out of the box all the time, I believe. I mean, he, he just has some really great ideas on different things and.
He's not a rubber Stanford type.
Not at all, not at all.
The, the, the reason why it's, I, I guess, question for staff here is, we still do have those applications out to, uh, for people to apply to be able to be part of the committees here. So if we're gonna be, we, we need to be consistent in some way here as well too. I just don't want people to come back and say that, um, that we're specifically choosing individuals and if they were.
Well, the last two that you forwarded me don't live in the village of Weston. So I don't know if you know that.
From finance, right?
Yeah, or the, the last two.
The H R.
The H R.
Right.
The last two in H R.
And I, only because it's not a requirement in our ordinance that they live in the village of Weston, but I did make sure, I can send you the other ones where the people were from New Jersey and Texas and California.
They think it's a job, is what they think.
Yeah, they don't realize it's forty.
Right, okay, I don't have a problem with this one, but now the gentleman, because I can't remember names, from the visitors bureau, he is gonna kind of look for people.
Tim. Tim White. Tim White.
I'm a tourist because I think it's important we get citizens that, that's dealt with that type.
You know, I mean, either a hotelier, a restaurant promoter, you know, somebody, you know, something to that realm. And I think Jess or Jenna, somebody said it tonight in, in the finance, not just, you know, flipping over finance, you know, in, into that role, you know, we only have one hotelier on there, the rest is all finance, you know.
And right now there is, and I think that's kind of the way it was supposed to be. There's only, really, there's only two people that, um, that are on finance and the visitors.
Okay.
Am I correct too?
Well, I think it's on, no.
No, it's.
Technically, it's everyone except the hotelier and this one person who's not.
Yeah.
So it's everybody.
Because it's basically finance without Mark Oldenberg is what it was.
So, Mister President, so I, like I said, I have no, no objections to the individual, but I just want to have some document.
No, I, I, I think consistency is right. You are right in asking for that. I, I will, so, yep, I'll get that.
You can just have them go and apply online, go to the website and apply.
Yeah, exactly, but, okay.
I've made that application for committee members so that it's, it's basic. I mean, they still would have to add their qualifications.
And it's basically just sits out there.
Education.
It's a new go, isn't it?
It's.
Yeah, it sits out there like a quick trip, you know, deal because, you know, they're constantly looking for six thousand employees. No, truly, it is six thousand. I'm making that number up, so. Okay, so that'll go to the, to next month and I'll get that, I'll, I'll talk to him about filling out the application online. Um, anything else? Um, move to closed session for nineteen point eight five, parent one, parent E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing of public funds, conducting other specified public business whenever a competitor or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Eisenstein, Malin, two, the agreement.
Uh, Mister President, I move to enter.
Yep.
Closed session under nineteen eighty-five, parent one, parent E.
Second.
Second.
By Yi.